Order at six thirty on June the seventeenth. We have a call to order and we got a roll call. We got five commissioners present with Commissioner Coon and Ordino being or Jennifer, what's her last name? This is Ordino being absent. Introduction of agenda and format. Turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. So for each item, we'll have a call to order followed by a staff report. After that, we'll have applicant's presentation followed by public comments in support or opposition to. At that time, please state your name and address for the record. Be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Following all of that, we'll have a commission and staff discussion. The commission will vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request, or to table the item. And then City Council will have a consideration of the zone change presented tonight at their Monday, July eighth meeting. So on to the order of the agenda. You've got consent agenda first with the excusal of absence and approval of minutes. And then you have two items for new business tonight, first of which is a zone change out in the Massey Oaks Plan Development area, specifically the Ordino tract, which is south of Old Massey Ranch Road, east of Future Harky and west of McLean Road. And then you have a presentation about the capital improvements program projects for the 2025 through 2029 program years. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair, for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Can we have a motion for the, in a second, for the consent agenda?
Commissioner McDonald, motion for.
Commissioner Fortis, second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the vote. All those in favor sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Passes five to zero. That moves us into new business. Commissioner Fuentes has to recuse himself. Okay, consideration and possible actions, zone change application, zone twenty-four dash oh nine. Public hearing request by Andrew Lang, BGE Inc., applicant on behalf of MO Track, Massey Oaks Track Three LP owner for approval of amendments to the Massey Oaks Plan Development on approximately seventy-nine point four-two acres of land located south of Old Massey Ranch Road, east of the Future Harky Road, and west of McLean Road. Can I have a motion in a second to approve?
Commissioner Hendricks, I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner McCatharine, I second.
All right, that takes us to staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Let me introduce Patrick Bauer to make this press, make the staff presentation. Take it away, Patrick.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. As mentioned, the request before you tonight is for a zone change for approval of amendments to the Massey Oaks PD on approximately seventy-nine point four-two acres of land, specifically as mentioned for the Ordino tract. And the future land use of the property is the suburban residential designation. So before the request, staff sent legal ad posted in the, or sent it to the newspaper to be posted in the Perilene News Reporter. Additionally, public notices were sent to all properties within two hundred feet that were in the city limits, and a notification sign was placed on the subject property. And to date, staff has not received any comments in favor or against the request. Just looking at the zoning of the properties as well as surrounding properties, you can see outlined in yellow is the subject property, which is currently a part of the Massey Oaks PD. And the properties to the west and the south are also a part of the Massey Oaks PD. And then we see some single-family residential three and single-family residential four to the east. And then to the north is the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is outside of the city limits. And now looking at the future land use designation of the surrounding properties, you see that it's predominantly suburban residential to the south, east, and west, and to the north is some low-density residential. So if we're going to look at an aerial view of the property, you can see it's currently undeveloped, and there's some of the other areas that are part of Massey are currently being developed. And so for the most part, to the southeast and west are single-family residential subdivisions that are currently going through the review process. And then to the north is some large lot single-family residences that are in the ETJ. So just a little bit of history on the property. It's originally annexed into the city in two thousand and one. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, more recently, an addendum to the Massey Oaks PD was approved by City Council to add this subject property to the Massey Oaks PD. And the proposed development at that time included a mixture of single-family uses, specifically a mixture of townhomes, traditional single-family detached, and some shared driveway, single-family detached, as well as a city apparel line emergency services site, a park, open space, and some detention. And the subject property is also currently undeveloped, as mentioned, and is not platted. And so the next two slides will kind of be getting a view of the property. So here's a view of the subject property from Old Massey Ranch Road. You can see it's vegetated along Massey, but then as you go further back, it's more unvegetated. And here we get a look at actually a aerial view of the subject property taken by a drone. And you can see there's the canal kind of towards the back there, largely undeveloped. And to the, kind of this would be to the west more, where you can see part of, parts of Massey are currently, the infrastructure is being developed. And it can, maybe hard to tell, but this roadway going here is actually, that is the future extension of Harky Road. Where my cursor is right now. And so for the next couple of slides, we'll kind of be going through a comparison between what the original PD proposed and then some of the amendments, proposed amendments to the PD. And so first, kind of looking at the zoning designation for the, for the subject property as a whole. Originally, in the PD, it designated out portions for single-family residential, which would include kind of that more traditional single-family residential than some of that shared driveway. And then also there's a portion in the middle for townhouse residential as the base zoning. And the proposed amendment is to change the entire base zoning of the development to the single-family residential for a district to kind of be that as its base layer. And then kind of looking a little more at the design plan, as mentioned, you can kind of see it a little clearer that in the original PD, you have the kind of light beige color being your traditional, the brown kind of on the outskirts is kind of your shared driveway. And then those lots in the middle with the kind of brown blocks are those townhomes. And you also see the lake to the south. And in the proposed amendment, there's a couple of changes. The main one would be that it's, it is changing all to the single-family residential four. So you wouldn't see any of the shared driveway or those townhomes anymore. And more importantly, as well as the lake, kind of configuration of the lakes is changing. Instead of having it only on the south, the lakes are kind of more of a central feature and continuing throughout the development. So you kind of have a north lake in the middle portion, as well as a south lake on the southern portion with the park, which was originally kind of at the entrance to the neighborhood, being a feature that's next to that north lake as well. In addition, it should be noted that the emergency services site, which was kind of in the northwest corner of the development, is still in that same location on the proposed amendment. And so looking a little about the fencing plan, the materials really haven't changed. They're still proposing the same types of materials. But they kind of wanted to note that still along Massey, there will be that masonry fencing with masonry coming into the development. But then since the lake is more of a central feature now, that house is backed up to, that has more of a decorative metal kind of backing up to it so that it's a feature that can, is more of an amenity to the development. And then it should be noted that next to the drill site, there's going to be an upgraded wood fence to kind of help with screening the drill site. And it should also be noted that in the previous plan, they still had trails going around the lake and detention area. And in the proposed amendment, in terms of like the landscaping and amenities planned, they still have trails that kind of go along Massey and come into the project, and they go around a portion of the north lake. But currently, the proposed PD does not have any trails kind of going around, you'd say, kind of the east side of the north lake, as well as there aren't trails going around currently the south lake of the development. In terms of the amendments, the main ones are that the north lake and the south lake are changing, and the kind of the park is still remaining. It's just changing locations, and it'll kind of include the normal things you would see, like sage structures, playground, and benches for people to utilize. And kind of going over just a couple of the deviations that were requested from the R4 regulations, the size of the lot regulations, they are requesting, and these are the ones that were, some of these were originally in the original PD, but just to note them again, the minimum lot width is forty feet, which goes down from the fifty-foot, which you typically see in R4. The minimum lot depth is a hundred feet. The maximum project coverage is a hundred percent, and the maximum gross site area is seventy-nine point four-two acres. And in terms of the size of the yards, the main deviations there are requesting and continuing with this PD is the minimum side yard for an interior lot would be five feet. The minimum side yard for a corner lot along the street side would be ten feet. And the minimum rear yard would be ten feet as well. And in terms of height restrictions, this is still similar in the original PD that they are requesting to bump the height up from thirty-five feet to forty feet, so no building shall be higher than forty feet in height. And then additionally, in terms of the public parkland dedication fees, those fees will be paid in lieu of dedication, and they will be paid at the time of final plat. And finally, in terms of landscape requirements, they originally had requests of these, and just to note them again, that lots within the development, so individual, single-family lots, shall provide one large shade tree placed on the property and will meet the two-inch caliper. And then they also have the additional lot requirements that we see in the UDC for you choose three out of the four options between ornamental trees, shrubs, and lot coverage. One thing to note is that in here is not a distinction on street trees, actually. The PD doesn't specifically state street trees, so it's just to be noted. And then kind of looking at some of the review criteria, in terms of the comprehensive plan, while the proposed zoning classification and specifically the base layer of R4 is not consistent with the suburban residential future land use designation, as that's typically kind of larger lots, it should be noted that this meets the goals of the comprehensive plan, meeting the lifecycle housing needs. And in terms of the thoroughfare plan, Old Massey Ranch Road, which is a major thoroughfare to be acquired, is going to be widened at some point, but that dedication for their property will be required at the time of plating, so it'll be taken care of at that point. And in terms of utility and infrastructure, a TIA will be required, or the existing one, maybe from the previous PD, may need to be updated prior to final approval of the PD, based on, if things change, based on the uses and the density of housing changing. And additionally, an amendment to the development agreement may also be required to address any additional infrastructure that may be required by this development. And so staff found that the request for the PD amendments met all seven of the criteria for approval. And so therefore, staff recommends approval of the amendment to the Massey Oaks PD for the seventy-nine point four-two acre tract with the following conditions. And these two conditions kind of pertain to the street tree requirements for individual lots, as well as the kind of sidewalk and trail amenities that go around on the proposed ponds and what's on the current, are the proposed landscaping amenities plan. So staff conditions, the first one is that prior to final approval by City Council, a requirement for large shade trees to be provided along the frontage of each single-family lot shall be added to the document. And the requirement shall require large shade trees with a minimum two-inch caliper measured at twelve inches above the root ball shall be provided, with the totalable caliper inch is equal to at least one inch for each forty feet of street frontage. And the second condition is prior to final approval by City Council, a six-foot sidewalk slash trail around the entirety of the north lake and south lake, as shown on the site plan on the next slide, shall be shown on the landscaping amenities plan. So as you can see, the, it's kind of harder to see from far away, but the image on the left kind of shows in yellow and kind of the, it's kind of an orange to brown, where my cursor is going, is where the existing trail goes. And then that magenta is kind of the areas where there isn't an existing trail, but it would, the condition would allow for trails to be provided around the entirety of the north lake so that the, it's actually an amenity for all of the neighborhood, and it's not just one side of the neighborhood is able to use it, and then the other side kind of has to get to it in another way. So magenta kind of provides circulation around the ponds as a whole. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, staff. Applicant presentation. State your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Andrew Lang with BGE. Our office is located at ten seven 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 Westheimer Road, Suite five hundred, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero four two. I think Patrick covered many of the points that we wanted to speak with you about this evening, but we'll do a brief run-through of the preserve at Massey Oaks, the development for the Ordino tract. Would also like to just point out that the Massey Oaks Development Team will no longer be involved in the development of this particular tract. The land is not currently owned by Massey Oaks Development and will not be involved in this portion of the project moving forward. I just wanted to make that, that clear to everyone. So we've, we've covered project location. We're just east of the Lu Tract. Lu Tract South, which was shown in that, that drone imagery, is already under construction, as is Harky Road. And the primary difference for this project will now be that we're doing entirely a single-family residential detached, traditional development. We've removed the duplex townhomes, as well as the shared driveway product that was in the previous PD. The, the master plan is comprised of forty, forty-five and fifty-foot lots. We're anticipating developing in that in three to four sections, and at this time, in one phase of development. So for the moment, that Beazer is expecting to develop this in one phase at one time, and will be constructed with entirely public streets. So no, no more shared driveways within the development, like was contemplated previously. As far as the proposed amenities, we'll have entry monumentation at the intersection of the entry and Old Massey Ranch Road. We have obviously redesigned the concept plan so that the lakes are now a more central amenity feature of the project. And the, the entry experience will be utilizing the lake as a focal point for the development. And that's, that's allowed us to think through the, the trail system a little bit more. And also, we're proposing the, the rec site on the south side so that that's a little bit more centrally located as well. Kind of focal point of the lake on, on the entry experience, but didn't want to remove the, the park feature, obviously. Then, again, now that we have a more centrally located lake, we really thought it was important to have those lots that back up to the lake have that steel view fencing. We think that's going to be a better feel for the community and for those homeowners in particular. So that's, that's why we wanted to feature those central to the project, and we will have that masonry coming in on the entry with a little daylight cul-de-sac with some steel view fencing, kind of wrapping around, around there as well. And then as far as park space proximity, consistently throughout the Massey family of projects, all of the, the lots within the development or development, dwelling units within the development are going to be located within a quarter mile of some sort of amenitized open space, whether that be park, pocket park, rec system, or rec site, trail systems, amenity lakes. Everybody is within a quarter mile of some kind of amenity space. And then just quickly, a couple of the sample elevations. Average lot sizes, twenty-one fifty for the forty-fives and twenty-three forty-five for the fifties. The home prices start in the mid-three hundreds for these products. Again, just a few more of the elevations here. And we're available, if you have any questions. Greg Coleman from Beazer is here as well. If you have any questions specific to the product, and obviously if there are any technical planning related questions, I'm, I'm here to assist as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the persons wishing to speak for or against. You can sit down right now because we can't. If we have any questions, we'll call you back. Persons wishing to speak for or against this? All righty, state your name and your address and all that good stuff.
Al Gromen, twenty-one sixteen Kildare Perilene, seven seven five eight one. We're the adjacent property owner to the northwest. We're going to do the bill to rent, and it's there. Gromax is, and we think this is a really good positive change and excited about the single-family versus a mixture of towns and, and single-family. So we'd ask that you approve it as next door neighbor. Also, since Massey is no longer part of this, they're the next closest neighbor, and they also would endorse it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? Third and last time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that moves it to commission discussion?
Staff, I had a couple of questions. Explain to me how getting rid of townhomes and joint access property laws is an improvement in lifecycle housing.
It's an interesting question. So...
Because I feel like this is a product that we have a lot of, right? And the townhomes, the joint, shared access, smaller lot, provided a new product actually kind of increased the range of lifecycle housing.
Right, so there certainly is more diversity to product types within the original plan development. As I understand it, the applicant's team tried to find a, another developer or another partner, once the original, once the original partner left that had that four-pack concept. And they just were not able to bring forward another developer. Now, there is only one portion of that original concept that is removed. The townhome portion could easily still be replicated within this proposed amendment. With that said, you know, I just, I don't know if there is appetite for that.
Thank you. There are. Number three in the seven criteria for PD says the extent to which the proposed PD will result in superior development that cannot be achieved through traditional zoning classifications. What are we getting here that we wouldn't get under a traditional zoning?
So we're getting additional amenities and the ponds amenitized. Normally, that is only something that is required under a property that's along corridor overlay districts. So that is one set of amenities that is upgraded over a, a normal standard subdivision. Additionally, we have some landscaping standards that go above and beyond. And the normal is for that two-inch tree, and with this, I believe they are including a part of their tree mitigation within the single-family developments to have those, those increased trees exist not only within the public spaces, but also within the private development as well.
Are we supposed to consider this as part of the overall, even though it's not owned by the Massey Oaks group anymore? Is it part of the overall Massey Oaks development, or is it totally separate? I mean, it's still under the PD.
Conceptually, it was, it was added on to Massey Oaks, so it maintained some of the base characteristics that the original Massey Oaks development had, which was that, that base R4 zoning district. Originally, Massey Oaks had a variety of lot sizes that were provided for, but then they changed that in the second amendment. With that said, though, I do recognize that they are two different developers and that they just happen to be in the same vicinity, which is where I would recommend looking at this holistically as you know, a piece of the puzzle, but not, not an individual on itself.
Is the developer okay with staff's recommended conditions?
This is Greg Coleman, Beazer Homes. One four three four zero Northwest Freeway. Just wanted to, yes, the answer is yes.
Is there a reason that we can't connect these trails into, I believe, I thought there was an overall trail system through Massey Oaks. This one doesn't seem to connect into that.
So at one time, yes, we did contemplate a pedestrian bridge connection to the south. We, we, BGE, in conjunction with the previous developer, did significant research and back and forth with the private agencies that control the areas between the kind of triangular area that the cursor is over right now and what we would call South Lake right now in the current PD. And the, the challenge was that BDD four, Brazier Drainage District number four, while they didn't, they would not allow the pedestrian bridge to be constructed, they wouldn't entertain the possibility of a variance. However, in our conversations with Centerpoint Energy and Kinder Morgan, they would not consider any of those connections to be allowed under any circumstances and thus resulting in the revision to the PD when we came before you this time.
We do want to add that there is a connection on County Road one hundred that we would be able to connect on the north as well.
Yes, we, we will be following all of the, the overlay district requirements as it relates to Old Massey Ranch Road in terms of the, the planting requirements and the the sidewalk requirements that are established by that overlay district.
Thank you. And just the last comment, I would say to staff, especially engineering staff as well, that I think we need to start looking at the economics of these sort of subdivisions, where do the proposed housing and the cost, are the price points, et cetera? Do they meet the costs of the city's requirements? Do they meet the costs of the city's requirements or responsibilities for infrastructure being put into it, right? So when you take the taxes being raised from these homes, you take out lease and fire and all the things we have to pay for, there's still money left over for when those puddles need to be fixed and that water and wastewater lines need to be replaced. Is this subdivision covering its own cost? When you look at that for all, all development. Thank you.
I really have no issue with the changes in the product and I certainly like the clarification that the new developer is not, it's just not their development to do the townhomes, although I, I would like to have seen the other product, but I certainly understand that you can only do what you can do.
I just want to clarify, does the city have an ordinance that you're supposed to have two trees and every, on every lot?
Correct. So the single family landscaping requirement is to have two trees. And then you can choose three out of four options to then satisfy the remainder of the landscape requirements. Those, Patrick, you're so good. Those are to have either small evergreen shrubs with four of them or eight of those and then four regular medium sized shrubs and, or to have solid lawn covering or an additional ornamental tree.
Okay. And this isn't necessarily pertaining to, I just want a clarification on it. So you could have one tree and then do some of this other and you would still, you'd still meet the requirement? Or do you have to have two big trees on each lot?
So this particular, this Massey Oaks allowed itself to have a deviation to have, to compile those two street trees into one.
Okay.
So normally you would have your two street trees and then your ornamental would be in the rear or you'd have a street tree and an ornamental in the front and then the other tree in the rear. With the mitigation that was in the original Massey and Rogers tract, that's what prompted the deviation from having both of those front trees be upgraded. Instead, we've got one upgraded street tree.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Yes.
Commissioner McDonald, would you mind repeating that with the microphone on?
So I would like, I move to amend the motion to include staff's conditions or an additional large shade tree as stated and the additional trail segments.
Commissioner Henry second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, carries four to zero. That brings us back to the original motion. Is that correct?
That would be to pass the amended motion.
Okay, a pass. We need to pass the amended motion and call for the vote. All those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, carries four to zero. That takes us into our next order of business. Wait for Commissioner Fuentes. Wears many hats. Okay. All right, consideration and possible action, five year capital improvement program. Two zero two five dash two zero two nine. The City of Pearland Capital Improvement Program, CIP, has been developed in order to further our commitment to the citizens of Pearland by working to meet today's needs as well as those of the future. The development of the CIP is a continuous process and consequently should be viewed as a working document. Therefore, while the list covers a five year plan, planning horizon and projected priority, it is revised every year in a, in order to accommodate new projects and reflect changes as needed. Just open it for discussion, for presentation?
Thank you, Chair. So each year we get to have a presentation from our Public Works and Engineering Group about the capital improvements program. And this year, we have Lorenzo and Fabiola to it's all right, awesome. And this is a requirement of the city charter for y'all to hear and make recommendations on the capital improvements program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lorenzo to go through the presentation. Take it away.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Lorenzo Wingate, Director of Engineering and Public Works. And I'd also like to introduce Assistant Director of Engineering and Public Works over Capital Projects, Ms. Fabiola de Carvallo. This evening, I'll present the proposed twenty five through twenty nine CIP program or capital improvement program, which you should have attached in your packet, all your projects with all the details and all the information associated with them. So after the presentation, the commission is expected to submit a recommendation for a capital improvement, for the capital improvement program in accordance with section seven point oh one D six of the city charter to be considered by a city council. The creation of the five year CIP is an in-depth, year-long process which touches every department throughout the city. So as you can see here, we're, here in the flow chart, we've already gone through first quarter and second quarter. We're currently in the third quarter, which is where the CIP is presented to you guys. And then we'll transition next month into the fourth quarter. And that process wraps up with city council taking action on the proposed twenty five through twenty nine capital improvement program. Aside from staff involvement, we also use several tools to help staff create the CIP program. Our Future With The Purpose shows the strategic priorities created by our city council as a fundamental criteria for developing the capital improvement program. From the strategic priorities, staff, staff works with consulting firms to develop planning documents to guide the implementation of the city, of the city's capital improvement program. These planning documents typically get refreshed over time to help progress and project future project needs. As you can see here, our vision for water and wastewater infrastructure is piloted by our water and wastewater master plans and the same thing with the drainage infrastructure and streets and multimodal plans. Each one of those plans will help guide us as we kind of go through and develop projects and add or remove things from the CIP program. Here's a look at the total capital improvement program for twenty five through twenty nine with an anticipated five year cost summary of about one point one billion dollars. But now we'll go through and we'll highlight some of the projects in each of the different categories, starting with the drainage program. So the drainage program, drainage CIP approaches about a hundred and forty five million dollars over the five year period. And currently we have, one of the projects to highlight is phase two of the Hickory Slough Sports Plex detention pond project. We recently awarded that project for design and intend to complete the final stage of the detention pond buildout as part of this project on the east side of the park. This pond provides an additional ninety five acre feet of detention for the area. And the project also completes, will complete a buildout of a stormwater pump station include a generator to support backup, for backup power. This will be the last of five drainage projects that were considered as part of the twenty nineteen bond program. Another project as part of the twenty twenty three drainage bond program is the Veterans Drainage Improvements, which will install underground stormwater conveying systems and replace roadside ditches to connect stormwater systems along Walnut Road. This project is currently in the design phase. Another twenty twenty three bond project is the Southwest Quadrant of Old Town, which will provide drainage improvements in the area between the split at Broadway and Walnut and the railroad tracks or Highway thirty five. The project's scope will include removal and replacement of driveways, sidewalks and existing drainage culverts, driveway culverts and roadside ditches. The design contract was recently awarded last month with design phase services expected to be completed, completed within about twelve months and construction expected to be completed by September twenty twenty five. The other projects that the city was able to acquire funding for from GLO will also be designed in the near future. That includes Hickory Creek, Harridge Miller and Brooklyn Acres and Hickory Slough Embankment Slope projects. Those projects are estimated to be around eleven million dollars. We'll move into looking at some of the facilities, CIP projects for twenty five through twenty nine. And the facilities CIP program has about a hundred and seventy five million dollars projected. One of the projects that we're currently working on is a Hill House Road Annex project. This project was really a culmination of a few projects or one, one huge effort to improve some of the facilities specifically at Orange Street. Where we're going to, we're proposing to relocate the fleet department from the Orange Street complex over to the Hill House Road complex. And as you can kind of see here in the picture, there's an existing traffic operations building, which is over on the, it's the darker building that's, that's shown on the picture. And then we're proposing to add the Parks Operations Maintenance Building over on the left side in the front and an additional expanded fleet facility to move it from the Orange Street complex over to the Hill House complex. So this project is actually delivered by a C Mar contract and we're expecting to take that contract and award it to council or propose it to be awarded by council on the first meeting in July. Again, in coordination with that Hill House project that we talked about, we have Orange Street Service Center Phase Two. In order to really make this project come to fruition, we had to move some of the current staff members, particularly fleet and parks away from the Orange Street complex, give them a space out at Hill House and then decommission some of those buildings and construct a new proposed operations and maintenance building for utilities and public works. So another one of our facilities projects is we have multiple fire stations proposed within this five year CIP plan. And the intention is to instruct these new facilities to address additional or increase response times as the population kind of grows south. And if you want to kind of put some of it together, this Massey Oaks and the development you guys just approved, these fire stations will support those developments as, as the city grows in that direction. Moving along the park CIP. The five year park CIP is estimated to be about four point, or forty five point nine million dollars. Future parks projects beyond FY twenty seven may be recommended as part of the parks master plan update, which is expected to begin later this year. We have Hickory Slough Sports Plex Phase Two. In addition to the detention pond project that we talked about a minute ago, that Hickory Slough Sports Plex is supposed to be kind of a dual purpose. It's original intention or its primary function is detention, is a detention pond, but making it a dual purpose to take advantage of the space, try to add some additional sports fields as we have on the, on the west side. We're going to add additional sports fields on the east side. Kind of taking those two projects, combining them together, we have two, two consultants working on the different scopes, but we'll combine those projects as one large construction effort. We also have Independence Park Phase Two, which is intended to improve one of the city's big cornerstone parks by adding amenities to allow the detention pond to be utilized as an amenity lake. There's also some additional lighting and additional amenities to, to, I guess, help some of the additional traffic such as I can't think of it what, off the top of my head, like food trucks and those types of vendors. So additional things to accommodate some of the vendors that would come out. So a lot of expansions here on this, in this phase two of an Independence Park. So we're also working towards completion of our Trail Master Plan. On the Clear Creek Trail from University of Clear, University of Houston Clear Lake to Berry Rose Water Reclamation Facility was funded as part of an eighty twenty cost sharing agreement between Tex Dot and the city. And it will create an opportunity for a continu- continuous trail from U of H Clear Lake to Lowe's on FM five eighteen. Another thing to kind of highlight on this particular project, this segment, we also got some partnership funds from Harris County Precinct too, to contribute to some of this trail segment. We'll move into the street CIP. The five year street CIP summary is projected at nearly two hundred and eighty million dollars. So we have, one of the projects is a long awaited Bailey Road project, which is currently under construction. This project will complete the ultimate thoroughfare, thoroughfare buildout, constructing the westbound half of Bailey Road Bridge over the railroad tracks. Also, we have the Smith Ranch Road Extension, which provides citizens improved access to the two eighty eight toll lanes and north and south access between Broadway and McCard outside of the two eighty eight corridor. So this project has another, is another one of those eighty twenty splits that we are currently waiting on Tex Dot approval before we can actually let that project. We also have the Hughes Road Expansion Project, which is another twenty twenty three bond project. It'll provide two additional lanes on Hughes Road between Pearland Parkway and the city limits. And it'll make that thoroughfare match where it's right now between two four lane segments with a boulevard segment that narrows down to just a two lane in each way. This will make that improvement to make that thoroughfare whole. We'll shift into wastewater, or I'm sorry, yes, wastewater CIP, which is projected at three hundred and eighty million dollars right now. The primary driver for the three hundred and eighty million dollar budget is really is Berry Rose wastewater or water reclamation facility replacement and expansion. And this project is currently being delivered as a C Mar project. You guys will see this come back to council in the next couple of days or the next couple of weeks for the guaranteed maximum price to be approved for Phase One. And this is really the big driver for the, the costs that you see associated with the wastewater CIP. So our water CIP for twenty five through twenty nine is projected at about eighty one million dollars. And right now, one of our big focuses on the water, water CIP is addressing a lot of the transite pipe that is throughout the city. We continue to progress. I think right now we're down to about eighty miles of transite pipe still remaining within the system. And so that pipe has exceeded its life expectancy. It's really susceptible to damage due to shifting soils and those types of conditions because it becomes very brittle. And so as we continue to work towards CIP and we continue to work in the CIP to address some of these transite pipe, pipe locations. And much of the transite pipe are on small diameter lines. And so what we do typically with this program is replace the small diameter lines with larger diameter lines that helps us improve our fire protection. And so what we do typically with this program is replace the small diameter um lines with larger diameter lines that helps us improve uh our fire protection. Um, so that concludes the presentation for the twenty-five through twenty-nine C I P program. And at, at this point, we'll take questions if you guys have any.
Lorenzo, how many projects are on this plan?
I'd have to get that, get back to you on that one. I don't have a.
How many projects did you present to us? What percentage did you cover in your presentation?
Um, I'd probably say maybe one percent of the projects that in that presentation.
I mean, my question is, we're supposed to make a recommendation on a C I P minimum of ninety days before the budget year. And we get three days to get a list of sixty pages. And we, I mean, it's a hard, it's hard to make a decision. I mean, are we just supposed to rubber stamp and say sure? I mean, because that's what I feel like we're asked for here, right? There's not one occurrence of the word, of the phrase comprehensive plan in the C I P. Part of our, our main job up here is to ensure the C I P aligns with the comprehensive plan. But I don't, I don't see that there was an attempt to make it.
So if you, if we go back to the, one of the very first slides, I think we mentioned that there are a number of plans that we use to kind of.
I understand. I mean, I, I helped create that chart.
Right.
So, but what I'm saying is from our point of view, we want to be able to tie in and say, okay, here's what the comprehensive plan says, this is why we're spending a hundred million dollars, right? I mean, it's um we don't even have a map that shows us where these projects are to see, are we focusing on Old Town, New Development, connectivity issues? Just to list sixty page of projects that we can't obviously digest in seventy-two hours and have any other kind of life we're supposed to have.
So I would tell you that this follows the same format that we've followed in the past. And going back through previous agendas, there was not a map attached to any of it. It was just the, the list of projects that was proposed. And so the format didn't change.
I mean, I know if you need us to tell you to do better, then do better, right? I don't know if, I mean, really, because we're not getting any information. We're getting a little paragraph and a list of projects. How many of these projects are new? Right? Because the C I P is adopted, so a, a good percentage of these should already have been on previous C I Ps, right? Or last year's C I P. What percentage, which ones are the new ones? We didn't get that. We could at least focus on what you're adding to it. And then this is our June, second June meeting. Right? So we're supposed to have something to you by July first. Didn't, you know, we don't have a whole lot of time, so we can vote yes because staff says, well, yes. How many council workshops did you all have on C I P?
So we have yet to have the council workshop on C I P. Um, we do a C I P series where we present updates uh three times a year. Uh, so we continue to have those throughout the year.
So was planning and zoning invited to those?
The C I P workshops?
I mean, how do, I mean, that's a way throughout the year that we can learn what's going on and participate or at least get information. Assuming you did detailed analysis, presentations, PowerPoints. I mean, none of that is coming to us.
So we'll note that for the future that on all of the C I P workshops, we'll invite the, the.
I mean, just, I just feel like if you're gonna come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for, I mean, as this, as the ordinance says, a list of recommendations which in the opinion of the commission are necessary or desirable to be constructed during the forthcoming five years, we have to have an idea of what's necessary and desirable. What are your decision-making metrics, right? How do these, how do these projects be identified? You know, we, we don't have any of that. We just have a list of projects that we're supposed, I mean, really, it's like, hey, here you go. Give us our yes and we'll be out of your hair.
No, I, I hear your feedback, but again, like I said, this is just, this follows the same format from the previous years that, that this has been presented to P and Z.
I just wanna, I wanna say, jump in here real quick. I know on the drainage, we had the Drainage Bond Committee and a lot of the things that we discuss in the Drainage Bond Committee and the importance of those, those were shown in his slides, but I think they're also on the other list. But I, I'm not sure if um there was, I feel like there was prior discussion on some wastewater treatment facilities, but I can't remember. I know it was before, before you were here, but I know you were with the city, but I just, I'm not remembering when we discussed it, but I feel like we did.
We're also, I mean, what were the, what were the projects that weren't identified or what were the projects that were talked about that didn't make the list, right? Because that's our, our opinion of what, you know, maybe, you know, hey, we'd like ninety percent of this, but we really think these grow in here or these lagging here and lacking here and we need to do something about it. That's what I'm saying. It's, we don't, we don't get information. We get, we get a list of projects. And, 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 you know, I'm sure they're all justified. There's a lot of just, there's probably another hundred million out there that we could do, right? But we don't know what those hundred million are because they didn't give this to us.
I do, I do agree on the idea of the map. I think the map is helpful. We can see, I mean, I know a lot of projects are gonna be geared towards older neighborhoods, especially in the drainage, because that was identified, older outdated infrastructure, but a map helps. I agree with that.
Uh, this, this draws. Yeah, it makes sense that those questions are valid, but we, I think like we need to have the process improvement because right now, as Lorenzo mentioned, we have several C I P series discussed throughout the year and we always invite, uh present that in front of council. But somehow there's a missing part is, it's not presented to Planning and Zoning Commissions. All those C I P series consist of five-year plans. So we have wastewater five-year plan, water, water, water five-year plans, thoroughfare five-year plans, all those five-year plans that our consulting engineer develops that gives us the list of different projects. And those are the projects that we present to council at different C I P programs and develop those kinds of costs.
If on, on your chart, it said identified in, in your wastewater plan, identified in the comp, you know, there's no tieback, right? I mean, it's just, we have a bunch of plans. They have a bunch of things and then we pull this out. But not, you haven't shown us that what you're recommending to us ties back to a specific plan necessarily, right? I mean, we have a street or an area, we have a project, you know, and, and like I said, we've all lived here long enough. We know there's a lot of work to be done and uh there's a lot of projects that don't make the list. But how do we give advice or how do we recommend without knowing what we're not recommending for?
And quite honestly, I think this is a great opportunity to provide feedback, which is exactly what you're, what you're utilizing. Um, quite often we forget who we are presenting to and what we are presenting. And we need to focus on what uh our audience needs to know. So, you know, getting the suggestion about the map, getting the suggestion about uh how things tie back into uh existing plans or where we need to grow to have better plans. Those are all great comments and um I think that you know, in, in Lorenzo's uh defense, this is uh this is the way that it's been done for a while, but the way that it's been done maybe hasn't been the best way and we'll fix that.
And I would just ask that, I mean, next year at a minimum in, in May, we see the plan. I mean, we need at least a month to look at it and digest it and then ask questions that you can come back and answer.
So the difficulty with that is it takes us a, an extensive amount of time to develop the plans and to get everything earned out with finance and.
Then I'll just say you need to find a way to, to get us involved.
I hear your comment. Yes, sir.
I mean, I understand the workload. Um, but if we're not involved sooner, then might as well just amend the code and take our role out of it. Because we're not, we're not giving you anything. Yeah. I yield.
I, I, I would say, you know, quite honestly, we, we are reactive at this point. I, I do like the idea of a map. I like the idea of, of emphasizing the new projects. I think in prior years, and I don't mean just this last year or the year before, prior years, I re, I recall fifteen years ago, uh Trent Epperson was actually the one that gave this, the, the, the uh Capital Improvement Program uh he, presentation, he brought it to, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He did a great job at it, but I, I think he had greens and yellows and browns and purples. I remember just lots of colors and and each one of them meant something. We talked about that format. And, and I'm certainly not, I don't think any one of us is blaming any individual here. It's the process itself that we're focused on. So I think you did a great job of, of presenting what you had and based on past history, that was enough. I think what, what y'all are probably hearing now is, and maybe that's not enough. Maybe we need to do something different. Um, I, I'd like to think of this as the planning and zoning and we do a lot of zoning and very little planning. Uh, we were fortunate enough to do the planning portions the last year or two when we did the comprehensive plan. And that, that felt good. Every one of us learned more uh and we became better P and Z members, commissioners because of that. And I, I think this, this to me, this is my favorite week when we go through the C I P. Because I, I always tie this in to later on decisions we make three months from now. And I go, you know, I remember that road being improved right here. Is that gonna affect anything? Or what about the drainage plan? This neighborhood wants to come in right in the middle of this drainage work. Is that gonna affect anything? So I do take this to heart and I, I try to learn as much as I can. This is overwhelming. I gotta tell you, this is overwhelming to me. When we first did this in two thousand and five and six and seven and eight, there were just a few projects and this is a lot. I mean, the city has grown and the city is doing a lot. Our infrastructure is tired. I, I, from, from all these that I printed out, several, eight pages of the, of just the uh the bulleted items, not the paragraphs. Like, the infrastructure seems very tired. So you guys are doing a bang-up job.
Okay, I have one more comment. Um, I know that we're expanding the Hickory Slough Parks. Uh, it looks like they're soccer fields. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the things that I think the city should make sure on that is that um clubs that are using the fields are incorporating like teams that are open to players in Pearland and not saying you have to try out and make the team and therefore you, if you don't make the team, you cannot use the facilities. And so I'm saying that has happened. And I think that should be taken care of because if we're gonna use our public money to pay for that, then it should be open. Whoever's using the field should make it open to all kids, no matter what. Um, if they're going to take over the fields every single night, five days a week or whatever it may be, or on weekends for tournaments. That's just one of my, I don't know if that's somebody in parks that we need to discuss this with, but I just think with that kind of money, this should be open to all kids in Pearland to use.
Um, I had some specific, um, I kind of just gave the general talk here. But um if we could go to the facilities, uh F A two-two-zero-five Reflection Bay, Reflection Bay W R F Fuel Island. I have no idea what a W R F Fuel Island is.
So water rec, water reclamation facility, uh an additional fuel island at that, at that facility to serve.
Um, okay, that's the uh, the the facility that's behind the little, the L-shaped strip center, upping center?
Yes, sir.
Kind of across the street from the Hilton Garden Inn and maybe behind, okay, thank you. Um, and then the uh, the capital improvements, the parks, Shadow Creek Trail Phase Two. Is, is that paid for by the Ters? Do you know? Is it a financing mechanism?
Yes, that is right. That'll be a Ters reimbursement.
Okay. And then uh, I had a couple more just like that. Same, same thing with uh the streets. The Shadow Creek Parkway Landscaping Street Lighting and Sidewalks, Ters item as well. That was back in two thousand and nineteen, so I'm gonna put that in there. Just to note, I know you talked about Berry Rose, speaking of streets, the Berry Rose expansion thereof. Is that gonna be in combination with Pearland Parkway, some improvements to that general intersection? And in particular, um, I work in that area and I see stacking issues with a left-hand turn coming from Pearland Parkway, coming from the Beltway on Pearland Parkway, turning left onto Berry Rose. There's a huge stacking issue there. Um.
So we've been working on signal timings in that location, um but this project will be, will be paired. So there are two projects, street projects. You have the Hughes Ranch or Hughes Road Expansion. That'll be paired with that intersection improvement at um Pearland Parkway and Berry Rose. Uh, so we'll make improvements there. We should see some, some improvements there uh at that intersection now. Uh, but we won't see the full extent of the improvements until we can add the additional turning lanes.
You are adding additional turning lanes on to uh?
Right. Yes, sir.
Very good. And I'm assuming at that point you'll stack them a little deeper. Maybe you don't need to if you put another lane in there, right?
Right.
Okay. And then uh, I saw Southwick Street Construction and that's reconstruction. That's one of the, the, that's the very bottom one on the streets. Uh, was curious, Southwick, where, I, I know Southwick is the old name for Silver Lake, so it's kind of the older sections. I didn't know where that might be.
One second, let me.
I didn't expect you to know every one of these off the top of your head. And by the way, you've done a great job thus far.
And that was a streets project, right?
Yes, sir. It was the very, very last one. Um, twenty-eight T R twenty-eight oh three. And I'm certainly not trying to put you on the spot here. I could, you can send me an email for that matter.
Twenty-eight oh three. It shows Abbey Field, Kimball, Linden and Russet Place. Let's see if I can.
Okay, okay. I know where those are. That's a, okay. That is the old, the old uh Silver Lake before it became Silver Lake. Um, wastewater, I noticed a whole bunch of uh rehabilitation of um lift stations, assuming that's just a, an ongoing problem and every so many years you've got to upgrade and or rehabilitate.
Yes, sir. So we did a lift station assessment. And so out of that assessment, we developed all these lift stations that needed to be improved and rehabbed. And so we've been systematically going through and knocking those out based on priority.
Got it. Last question. You mentioned transit pipe. I have no idea what a transit pipe is. Is that the blue ones that?
No. So it's a very old pipe material. Um, it becomes, it's very brittle. Uh, and so we try to take that out of service uh because just the ground conditions that we have here is, is extremely brittle and it, it'll break at the, as soon as it gets dry or the soils expand and contract, um we have issues with it, with it breaking.
Well, it's not like we've had dry weather, you know, here. So transit pipe, now this is water, not wastewater.
Right.
Concrete water pipe with holding eight.
Yeah, asbestos pipe. That's what we call it. Asbestos pipe. It's fragile and it can break very easily. It's hard to connect and repair too.
Interesting. Very interesting. Thank you. Thanks for your knowledge and expertise.
Okay. Uh, I think I'm the last one that's gonna speak, but um, you know, thank y'all for giving the presentation and stuff and and uh, but I think these were all good comments. Uh, I think going forward, it does put us in a, a procure situation when we sit there and the only thing that we can do is, is read it when we're at the house and go through it to the best of our ability. But when we don't know what else, what's new on it, unless we go back to last year and look at last year's, see what got added, uh see what got dropped. Uh, you know, it, it makes it difficult to sit there and, and uh recommend approval to it, to the city council when we've had very little input into it. Uh, I think these were all good comments. I think that going forward, I think it could be really advantageous. But uh, but you know, that, that, I, as far as the presentation and stuff that you did, I think you did a good job. All right, now, do we actually vote on this? Make a motion and vote?
Right. So uh each year, the Planning and Zoning Commission uh passes a vote on the C I P. And uh from that, uh that gets put into the budget uh as y'all's recommendation for approval of the C I P presented to council. As y'all's recommendation for approval of the C I P presented to council.
OK, can I have a motion in a second?
Before we do that, just to understand, we're supposed to pass this before July first?
Yes.
Many days before the start of the fiscal year.
I'm sorry. I just want to add one note there. When you talk about which are already in project and which are new projects up to twenty twenty four. Though it is listed there in each of the item up to twenty twenty four, those are the projects that have been designed or under construction. From twenty five onwards to twenty eight, those are the projects that has not been. Started designer, we haven't awarded those projects. Again, I I understand and agree with the comments that like, OK, how do you get all these things within a few minutes?
It's hard. Would have been on last year for twenty twenty four, right? Most of. I mean, that's what I'm saying. They're not new. You know, so we don't. We don't necessarily know what's being added. Like, you're, and maybe it's just the way your charts, your chart is, right? I mean, you don't have the typical timeline C I P that you see. Where you can kind of see this year, we're doing this and how we're funding them out over years. Or you're just doing the list, which makes it a little bit harder to understand, I think. But maybe put a star next to new this year, or, you know, once they've been added, but.
Color coded.
Yeah.
So so I guess my question was. I know we have a meeting July first. Would it help anybody to? And is it even appropriate to say, can we table this to July first? I'm not recommending that. I'm just asking the question. If July first, passing it on July first still met your your needs. And I don't know that two weeks or would get us any more closer to the goal of of understanding this better.
I mean, I think in a in a real world, it would, but I think. I think just with the timeline they're operating under now and what they've done and what they're used to doing, I think that would just kind of throw them off.
Yeah.
Getting all the information that we would prefer to have. And I think we were kind of in this meeting thinking that this is typically where we, you know, have to do whatever we do. So I would say we just. Move forward and then hope that. I think it's a. Combination of being. More, you know, more participatory in the process throughout the year or sharing more information. So we know what's coming down the pike and what's happening. So that when it does get to us, we don't feel like it's just like, boom, here's sixty pages. Enjoy. But I would make a motion that we approve the C I P.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a. Motion and a second to recommend for approval to city council. We've already had discussion. All those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same side, carries five to zero. That brings us to a city council update.
Thank you, Chair. So we had a city council meeting on last Monday. Last Monday, they heard first consideration for that property on Hatfield. If you remember, that is the property just south of the Knights of Columbus property. That wanted to go from general commercial to R four. There are pretty good discussion about. The potential development of that property. They leaned hard into some of the discussion that y'all had with the applicant. On ability to develop the plan or develop the property with the pipelines and. The R four zoning and the cluster plan and all of that, so. There were a couple head nods back to the commission for asking good questions. With that, the council took a vote to approve as requested. And voted zero to seven, so that was a denial of the request.
All right. I know. That brings us to Commissioner Activity Report. Anybody?
I'm sorry. So going back to maybe in the future for C I P, I know that because I served on the Drainage Committee. And if I saw any of my projects on the C I P list, I would know what that was about, why it was there, because I invested a lot of time in those meetings. But I think that I couldn't do wastewater, water, drainage, traffic. I think that we would have to divide and conquer as a planning and update each other on it. Or if somebody had comments, like, let's say you had a comment or question about drainage, you could come ask me. You should be able to come ask me about how that process happened, and I can fill them in or whatever. Because I think that us being involved in all those meetings might not be. Efficient, but but if you want to volunteer to be in all the committees or conversations.
I think they're all. They're different, right? Not not every group has a drainage committee. That was a bond package thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm seeing like if they do this in the future to set up time to meet on the different. Because I know that we had one with the prior public works engineer. On the roads and the type, the different roads that needed to be improved. And I don't know if it was a firm that came and talked about it or who discussed it. But like the, I know that the Bailey Road. Extension over the. That goes to the Pearland High School. That was in that discussion. So I wasn't at all shocked to see that when that project was going in construction, that it was happening. And where it came about and why, so.
Yeah, and and I'm not saying, I don't even know if it needs to be a formal, you know, the commission goes to these things, right? I think it's more of letting us know, you know, that, I mean, at least three times a year, as Lorenzo said, that there are C I P updates to council. And so even if we get the packet and the presentation, so that we have that to look at and go through. And then and then maybe it's, you know, Raj or somebody comes. You know, every so many months and just gives us an update on what's going on with the C I P. Progress on current projects that we've approved and things are looking at for next year. I mean, I think it needs to be an ongoing process so that when we we get to this point, we're like, yeah, we feel comfortable. We know this stuff. Let's let's do it.
Completely different topic. I'm working in Florida. Developing, helping develop some parcels there, and their rules are significantly different than ours. The process is significantly different and. I I definitely can tell you. It's different coming into a another state and being the outsider. And nobody liking you because you're an outsider and make them, you know. Perhaps the process is a little more difficult for outsiders. So I I sympathize with our, you know, when we have people come in. And and being on the other side of the of the podium. Is difficult at times, so. That was it, just Florida's beautiful place to visit. I'll say that.
Okay, nobody having anything else. Our next P and Z regular meeting will be July the first, two thousand and twenty four. With that, adjourn this meeting at. Seven forty eight.